Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the town planner. I will start us off with a roll call of the commission members and then turn it over to the chair. So I've got Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Mike Grabulis.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
Matt Hotvogner.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Ina St. James.
Here.
James Rock Cliff.
Here.
And we were notified in advance that Mike Walsh and Matthew Banda will not be joining us this evening. All right, Chair, it's all yours.
Sounds good. Ladies and gentlemen, hello, welcome to Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Meeting. Today's October 12. And we are at 7:00 PM. We have a full agenda, so without delay, Scott, if you can read the legal notice, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. Town of Farmington Town Planning and Zoning Commission, notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Wednesday, October 12, 2022, at 7 o'clock PM on the following applications. Louis, sorry if I pronounced that wrong, Cohen, application for special permit to raise chickens, 20, at 156 Red Oak Hill Road, R20 Zone. NHR Construction LLC, application for special permit for accessory apartment greater than 650 square feet, and expansion of home in excess of 30%, located at 10 Red Coat Lane, R30 OS Zone. Steve Joseph, application for special permit for home business for retail sales and classes related to custom jewelry made onsite and sale of men's clothing and accessories located at 55 Lovely Street, R20-R12 Zone. Legacy charge application for special permit and site plan modification for church use at 15 Executive Drive, C1 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting can be found on the Town of Farmington's website at the address on your screen. A copy of this proposal is also online at the address on your screen or by calling the planning department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 22nd day of September, 2022. Town Planning and Zoning Commission, and I know St. James Chair.
Thank you very much. And James, for the record, you're of course more than welcome to participate, but you are not voting this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's start with new business. The first item in front of us is an application for an expansion of a home. It was an application that was previously looked at and approved. It's from Philip Guglielmo. And who do we have on the line?
You have. We have Phil. Yep, go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, you have me.
All right, sounds good.
So what, um, since the last application, I was mapping it out and I wanted to expand a little bit more by going adding five feet towards the driveway side of it. I could, instead of having to block up the old hatchway and cut through the existing hat, uh, foundation wall to have access between the new and the old basements, I could, if I go five feet to the left, I can use the existing hatchway access between the two basements instead of cutting the wall. So that's kind of what I'm proposing.
Okay, Shannon, will you pull it up for us to, you know, so dimension, so.
So what's the overall increase? So the existing dimension for the expansion versus the proposed dimension for the?
Okay, so the the proposed is 34 feet by 28 feet. And before that, it was 26 feet by 30 feet.
Okay.
So I'm going five feet one way and two feet another way.
And the initial of last time, it was already over, right, 30%?
Correct. Yep, so this is an increase, so it required the expanded home provision, and so a special permit was issued back in December of 2021. So there was a public hearing and all the notifications done in December 2021 because it exceeded the provisions and required that for the expanded home portion of our regulation. Since then, Mr. Gugliamo is, he needs an additional 200 square feet as he just explained. However, under the zoning regulation, the Article 4, Section 30, the regulation notes that for any home or accessory building for which a special permit has already been approved under this section, the review then reverts back to the commission for any change and the commission needs to decide whether the addition is significant or not. If you feel it's not significant, then you are free to vote on this this evening. If you feel it is significant, then it requires a public hearing.
With what we have today, does it not require any notification, right?
So correct, under new business, so under new business to make.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so under new business, there's no public hearing unless the commission determines that the that the expansion is significant enough that it warrants then to reopen and require a public hearing, at which case then you would accept the application and set a public hearing date, and it would be November 7th, that a public hearing could be held.
Totally like derailing everything. Can you pop this property up on our GIS for us and then we'll turn it over for questions? I just want to.
Yes.
What a home is.
Okay, please, if you're not part of this particular application, please leave your microphone muted. Thank you.
No, I do this to you all the time. Thank you, Shannon.
That's okay. Main Street.
It's not a corner street, is it a corner?
No, it's not a corner line. I just have to get down to the right. Here we go, 404 Main Street. So this is the lot, this is the this is the location of where it is on Main Street. The expansion is at the rear. If I come back up.
Yeah, thank you.
To the site plan, right, the site plan is, it's got Main Street at the bottom of the page, so the expansion is here, existing houses here, expansion to the rear and the existing detached garage located back. So when we go back to right, Main Street, existing house, expansion will be here and they exist, the detached garage.
Yep, thank you. All right. Thank you. And Phil, do you have any additions before we turn it over to commissioners for questions?
Nope, I guess so. I'm asking kind of for the 200 square feet additional to what I had originally done, so. That's it, yep.
Thank you. All right, Patrick, we'll start with you. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
I guess one question I would have is, are your neighbors aware of this? You know, because the last time there was a public hearing, but now have do they know that you're going for another 200 square feet?
They, uh, the two, the one on either side, I've mentioned that they've asked me what the holdup was because I started getting ready and I said I am redrawing the plans. So I would say the one on either side of me do know. Yes.
Okay, and then the, and the reason for 200 square feet bigger is, is what exactly? You just, you started laying it out and realize it doesn't fit the right way, or can you explain that?
Yeah, realizing that if I went five feet towards the driveway, that I would include the existing hatchway opening in the basement to connect the new and the old basement. Otherwise, the plan was to close up the existing hatchway because there's a new one on the addition and then cut through the existing wall, which happens to be 12 inches thick, to connect the two basements. So by extending over five feet, I don't, I don't have to block up the old one and I don't have to cut through the existing wall, the old much wall.
Okay, so that, so that's the reason is that you want five feet bigger and rather than shift, and rather than shift the whole thing over five feet and leaving it the same size? It wouldn't, why, what's the reason for not just shifting? Is it architectural?
Uh, the way it's set on the opposite side, I kind of had an alcove, a shower set back, I don't know how to exactly explain it, but it's like a four by five, four by five foot area that's going to be the master bathroom that has a shower set on that side, kind of attached to the existing house. If, I can't, it's hard to explain, but if you look at the the floor plan, it kind of notches out. I would have to change that whole system now.
Okay. All right, yeah, no further, no further questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike Grabulis?
So the previous approval was for the 3504 square feet or minus 200 of that, and we're adding 200 to that number?
So the previous application was 780 square foot expansion, 26 by 30. And the new is 28 by 35, 980.
Okay. Do you by chance happen to have the home sizes in the area readily available?
I, I don't, I may have done that at the time of the December 2021, but I do not have that at my fingertips.
All right. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Mike. Scott?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm still confused. Where on the, on the floor plan there is the extra 200 square feet?
The very, so this was 20, this was 26 by 30. And now it's 28 back by 35.
Okay.
So it's, it's in both directions. It's two feet in the east-west direction, towards the west, and then it's an additional five feet south.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I had, yep.
That's here.
Thank you, Scott. Matt?
Just to pick up on that, five feet closer to the adjoining property than what we previously submitted?
No, no, it's five feet towards the driveway. So towards the center of the lot.
Okay, okay.
So it's just, it's.
Side yard is going to be the same. It's, it's more, it's towards that way, the way the arrow is going towards the driveway.
So is, is your, so it's going to be over your, it's not going to be over your driveway though, but it's going towards that direction?
It is just going in that direction, but it does not touch the driveway, no. Because it's still an offset of it from the back of the driveway corner of the existing house. It's still not all the way to the end. It's set in by about four feet.
So is it fair to say it's just going more back into the right, right, from?
Correct.
Does that make sense, Shannon?
The rear of the existing home is 34 feet and then there's a six foot offset for a, I don't know, Phil, what, what's on the side of the house here?
That's just an open porch with a cover on it.
So the, the home expansion off the existing corner of the house starts how far over?
About four feet in.
Four feet in, and then it's going to go 35 feet out, so 30, so there's going to be a five foot overhang that's going to out, overhang the the south side of the house or the left side of the house as we're looking at it by five feet.
Yes.
And is that, that's so, back to my original questions, I'm just going to ask again, just for clarification. Is that five feet closer to the property line than what we approved back in December 2021?
No.
Okay.
It's the opposite direction.
So this already had a five foot overhang in 2021 and the 30 feet came, so that was nine feet originally from the corner of the house to this wall. So this five foot overhang was already there, is what you're saying, Phil?
Yes, that, that wall and that's side lot has not changed sideline.
Okay, so it, it's this wall has moved five feet, so rather than nine feet from the corner, it's now five feet off the corner.
Correct.
Okay, we just made a circle, but that's helpful. Okay.
And then again, just to walk me through the driveway, because it looks like the building now is over the driveway.
Yeah, the driveway that's drawn on that plan, that's not the way the driveway ended up being, the part that curves. Instead of going to the left side of it, we're looking at it, it actually comes closer to the garage itself. It comes about a foot off, so the driveway is really, the part that goes into the larger part is really to the right.
Okay.
See how it's, the way diagram on flat plan is different.
I guess there's a little bit less of a bend for lack of, okay.
Matt, any other questions?
No additional questions, thank you.
Thank you. How about you, Liz? Liz?
Um, if you are, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this question, but what was the initial reaction of your neighbors when you with, to the initial application and approval? Were they?
Nobody had, I've had 10 neighbors that I had to notify and nobody's against it. I'm close with both neighbors on either side and they're just kind of like, well, you've been talking about this for 10 years, let's get it going. But yeah, so they have no opposition. You know, they haven't said anything really.
Okay, that's, that's my question. The other questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And James?
No questions.
All right, I do not have any new questions, but we do have to, as a commission, decide whether this is significant or not, or if we're okay accepting, excuse me, approving the application. I guess on the significance, I guess we'll do run, run through everybody. Patrick, do you feel that this needs a public hearing? Is this significant? Yes or no?
Well, I go both ways. As a part of me, that's like if it was 75 square feet but 200, even if, you know, to not give the public a chance to, it seems significant to me. It's 200 square feet and originally it was 780 and now it's 980. So like I said, I can go both ways, but I'm tipping on the side of significant.
And the reason I left was, because you're the first one, right? So it's tough to follow the group, but thank you. And thank you for explaining your decision. Mike, significant, yes or no?
I think it would be more significant if it had gone towards the southern property line. But it obviously is, and now it's 300 square feet over the allowed. I could go either way with it. I'd be interested to see what the other commission members have to say.
Okay, Scott?
I, you know, I think 200 square feet to what, to what Patrick said is significant. I don't see any harm in giving the public an opportunity to chime in on it.
Okay, Matt?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with my fellow commissioners around the fence. Again, it's not going towards the property lines, going back. But I think in the interest of public transparency, I think 200 square feet seems like, you know, necessary to give everyone a second look at it.
Okay, how about you, Liz? How about you, Liz?
Uh, I agree. I think it is, 200 feet is a square feet is a, is a big space, so I think we should just give everyone, give everyone a second look at it.
Okay, so it looks like we have a majority voting for significance of public hearings. So do we do a motion to accept it or?
So I, yes, why don't we be motion to accept it and then set a public hearing date for November 7th?
Okay. All right, Patrick. Are you okay making that motion?
Uh, yeah, so. Okay, so we're, I'm making a motion to accept.
Yes, maybe accept it instead of public hearing.
Yep. And then what was it, November 7th?
Yes, please.
Okay, Patrick Carrier. I make a motion to accept the application by Philip Guglielmo to expand a home in an R20 zone in an excess of in excess of special permit granted on, wait, did I do that right? Let me.
You're good, you're good.
All right, special permit granted on December 21st and set a public hearing date of November 7th, 2022.
All right, and second, please?
Scott Halsted, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so this will be a public hearing item. Yes.
Can somebody hear me?
Oh my goodness, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil, and then you can follow up with me tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I know, I know, it's.
Okay.
Then next item.
It's going to be one of those nights, apparently.
It is, it is. Farmington Public School is here, or someone is here to present and.
Sure do. We've got Sam here.
Oh, good, okay. So it's an.
Okay, Mr. Cohen, your item is not up for discussion at this particular point in time. You will, we will announce when we are ready to discuss your application. Please leave your micro, please leave your microphone muted until that time.
Okay, so site plan approval for a shed.
Yep.
Who do we have?
We have Sam Kilpatrick, the facilities director for the Farmington Public School System. Or we did. Sam, you still on?
Yes, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, so Sam Kilpatrick, One Monteith Drive is, is my office location. The application is for 25 Wolf Pit Road, East Farms School. As Shannon has pulled up there, you can see there have been two storage containers there, 20-foot storage containers. I don't know exactly how long, but probably about 20 years, those two containers have been in that location. It's behind the school in a, in a paved turnaround that's, that's there. And aside from how they look, they tend to leak and, and you know, we have a lot of condensation in there, obviously with big metal containers. So we're looking to replace those two containers with a storage building like what's pictured on the left there. That's actually the exact one, minus the dormer and the cupola and the two windows that are on the side that we're looking to put in that location instead of those containers. The building is 24 by 16. It's approximately 14 feet high and it would fit in exactly that same turnaround where the two containers are currently.
Okay. All right, Sam, thank you. So that's, yeah, what we're seeing, same location, everything, okay. All right, commissioners, questions? Patrick?
No questions. I, it looks great. The building was great. It's definitely an upgrade. So no, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Same as Patrick, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I agree with, with both of the previous commissioners, much, much big, much improved.
How about Matt?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. And Liz?
Looks good. Glad to see it. It's definitely an improvement.
And James?
Good on my end as well.
All right, I agree with all of you. So this one is an easy one. We need a motion and a second to approve this shed?
Yeah, so Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a move, a motion to approve, to approve the site plan by Farmington Public Schools to install a 16 by 24 foot shed in an, in an R40 zone.
And a second?
Matt Hugnert, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, I think it was unanimous. Awesome, thank you. All right, thank you, Sam.
Thank you all. Good night.
Sam.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, we have an application for a fence at 29 Main Street. And is Tammy Morton on the line or?
No, it was possibly going to be Anna, and I'm not seeing. Hang on.
Sure.
Now. And they had let me know that they might have a conflict, so I will. The commission's agreeable. I'm going to handle this one and then if there's questions, then we can certainly delay, but I think it's straightforward. So the, the property in question is a rear lot off of Main Street in Farmington. You can see it here on the, the assessor's map, so this is Main Street, Farmington. There's a right away, it's a shared driveway with 27, 29, and 31 Main Street. The property owner of 29 Main Street is asking to install a privacy fence along their south property line, which from a zoning standpoint, the way the subdivision was set when this property was created, this is their front lot line. So we've requested that they seek a permit with the commission to install a fence greater than four feet. They're looking at it, as I noted in the agenda review, a six to eight foot vinyl fence with a gate at the driveway. The gate will be manual. It's, again, it's a privacy fence that they're looking to install. Any fence up to, any fence in any other yard does not require commission approval. And we're just quite honestly, being overly cautious just to have the, the commission review and, and take a look at this, this fence. It's going to be a vinyl fence, white vinyl fence. I think that's it. I think that covers all of the items.
All right, Shannon, thank you. All right, Patrick, questions about this application?
Yeah, just the, the house directly across, how does that, like, what direction does that house face in? It looks like it's, that fence is more towards the back of the house or?
The, the house faces Main Street, so it would be towards the side of their, basically the side of their house. This driveway comes all the way up and then comes, comes into this house and then they've got a rear rear garage back in this vicinity.
And then in terms of the the gate itself, the, is that a, so is that just like a, is that something they're actually going to close and how does that work with?
They don't intend to have it closed on a regular basis, but again, it'll be a manual gate, so in the event of an emergency, there's no, it's not automated or electronic in any fat, in any way. So it's just a regular manual gate.
Got it. No more questions. Thank you.
All right, this is a property. Thank you, Patrick.
So here you can see it better on the aerial. So it'll come from the, the full length of their southern property line. You can see how their driveway comes off. The intent is for the gate to come back. So it'll be back off the, the property line of 10 feet or so and then die back in on their, the other property line.
Okay, thanks, Shannon, and thanks, Patrick. Mike, any questions?
No questions or issues with the fence.
Okay, and Scott?
No questions from me either.
All right, Matt?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
Uh, just one question, is this house in the historic district? Do you know?
It is, and because of its location and not visible from the street, they had already received review and determination that no permit, no certificate of appropriateness was not needed.
Okay, I'm just curiosity. No questions other than that.
Thank you. And James?
No questions.
Thank you. So Shannon, is it going to be an eight foot or up to eight feet?
Up to eight feet.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's not blocking, there's no site issue, so yeah, it, I have no issue with it either. We need a motion and a second, please, to approve this application.
And are we, so are we approving this, the site plan review or the site plan? Does that make a difference?
Oh, just the way it's written?
Sorry, site plan. Sorry, it's site plan of approval to install, so site plan approval to install. Sorry about that.
Good catch.
Okay, all right, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to approve the site, to, well, to approve the site plan by Tammy Morton at 29 Main Street to install an eight foot fence and gate in front yard, R20 zone.
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They're sounding unanimous. All right, thank you. Item approved, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next item is a study that will be presented to us regarding historic district and two houses that will be added to it. And who's doing that?
We've got Garrett on the line, so our assistant town planner will present this.
Excellent. Hello, Garrett. Excellent. Hello, Garrett.
Hello, hello, members of the Commission. Um, so we have two, uh, homes that were quite, were, that requested to be added to the Farmington Historic District. They're both located on Waterville Road, uh, out across, um, Route Four from the main district of the historic district. They're both built by Noah Wallace, uh, around the same time in the early ni- uh, twentieth century. And part of the process involves being referred to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission as well as, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office, which has been done. Um, so you're presented with this report. Uh, there's a sixty-five-day comment period. If anyone has any comments on the report, uh, and any comments will then be included in the report. Uh, we've got eleven Waterville Road, which is owned by Jennifer and Jared Proto. It's a colonial or vile style home, uh, and we have, uh, twenty-six Waterville Road owned by Beatrice Stockwell. Again, it's a colonial or vile style home, uh, but this one abuts the called, uh, Farmingtonian Club.
Hmm, okay, yep.
Yep, and Shannon showing where they're located on the map.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so you need just a recommendation, or what?
So, uh, again, it's in for review and comment, and so if the C- Commission, uh, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review it. Ideally, we'd look for a positive referral, uh, back to the Farmington Historic District. Um, then they will be, once it finishes with the State Historic Preservation Office, then the Farmington Historic District will be holding a, um, a public hearing regarding the addition of these homes into the district. And then when it finishes with the Historic District Commission and that public hearing, it then goes to Town Council for final acceptance and adoption, because it requires a, uh, change to the town ordinance to add in these two properties.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Alright, um, hopefully everyone had a chance to review the, um, the write-up from Garrett and, um, is familiar with the location. Um, Patrick, do you have, uh, any comments or questions for Garrett or about these properties?
No, no comments. I read through it. Um, I think it's great.
Okay, how about you, Mike?
No questions. I'm fine with it.
Alright, Scott?
Yeah, no questions from me either. Like, it looks good.
Matt?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
No questions. It seems to be a, a good addition to the district.
Alright, and James?
Keep the good times rolling. No questions.
Alright, um, I love the write-up. It's so cool to read about these, um, older properties and in this case, Noah Wallace, right? Um, people, just amazing that he had the forethought, and it was like two thousand acres or something, I read somewhere.
There's, yeah.
It was quite a bit, but you don't have to pull it up or anything. When we do something like that, is it in perpetuity? So.
Uh, yes, when they homes, for all intent and purpose, yes. In order, once the home is added into the district, in order to remove it from the district, the same process has to be undertaken in reverse, and it needs the support of the State Historic Preservation Office and
Got it.
go back through this entire, uh, process, so it is, um, for all intent and purpose and perpetuity.
Got it, got it. And the, the homes, um, Garrett, you probably have that in your research, but, uh, the homes that are closer to Route Ten, I mean, Route Four, that we probably have several already, right, that are historic?
Oh, yeah, so if you, yeah, sorry, I can go.
And I don't want to delay this period.
It's okay. Uh, why, Shannon, I'm gonna zoom. So this is, so everything that's shaded in on this map is currently registered in the Farmington Historic District.
Ah, okay.
So, the most of, there's a handful on Garden. Uh, mo- I think everything, or ninety percent of Ms. Porter's property, also the, the Hill Stud, uh, Stanley Whitman House, a lot of up Main Street and, um, High Street. So.
Nice, okay, great. I, um, I think this is awesome too. So we need a motion and a second, or?
A motion and a second to, um,
For positive.
Pos- positive endorsement back to Farmington Historic District with respect to the study report.
That sounded really good, Shannon. I know, sorry. Alright. Patrick, I'm sorry. Patrick, uh,
I'll do my best. I'll do my best on that one. Um,
Alright.
Alright, so, so I, so Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, I would like to make a motion to approve um, a positive referral to add eleven Waterville Road and twenty-six Waterville Road to the Farmington Historic District.
Excellent.
Perfect.
Second, please. Liz Sanford, I second. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, unanimous. You're good. Thank you, and nice job, Patrick. Thank you, Garrett.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, um, we, the next item is, uh, we're accepting an application from Danielle Foss. We need a motion, please, and a second.
Uh, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to accept the application for special permit by Daniel, by D- Danielle Foss to raise twenty chickens at three twenty-five A Scott Swamp Road in an R thirty zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of November seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Liz Sanford, I second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're good. Should I be asking opposed, or are you okay if I hear everyone?
I.
If I, okay, good. Alright, moving right along, uh, next one is also an application we're accepting from Brianna Hilt. We need a motion and a second, please.
Oh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Brianna Hilt for special permit to install trees in the Ridgeline Protection setback area to replace trees removed without approval, located at twenty-one, twenty-one Eli Road in an R eighty zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of November seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Second, please.
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're good. Thank you. So that is it for new business this evening. We're gonna shift to the public hearing portion of our meetings. This is where, uh, an applicant presents to the Commission. We have a chance to ask questions. Um, then we will, uh, ask anyone in the public, if they have comments, concerns about the application, and see where it takes us. The first item is, is an application from Louis Cohen. It's an application for special permit to raise chickens at one fifty-six Red Oak Hill Road, R twenty zone. And we have Louis, I believe, right? Uh, we had him on. Yes, so we just, we, uh, Louis, if you can state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Louis, you'll need.
Louis, Louis Cohen, uh, one fifty-six Red Oak Hill, Farmington, zero six, zero three, two.
Thank you. Alright, go ahead with your request, please.
Yeah, you know, uh, we're not talking about six, uh, twenty chickens. We're talking about six chickens and twenty chicks, because I'm going to buy small chicks. I'm going to grow up, and before the Christmas, I'm going to kill all, you know, I'm going to change every year. We're talking about six regular chickens, and the rest will going to be twenty chicks, you know, for food, for, uh, for meat.
Okay, um, do you have a coop right now, or like, do you have, where, where do they stay?
No, they are in a coop. They have, I have a big coop, and I have, uh, already out, I have a fence around of the coop too.
Do we have a picture, Shannon, or?
Alright, nobody, nobody told me about, um, nobody told me about the pictures. I can, I can provide you a lot of pictures if you want, but nobody told me nothing for pictures.
There is, we, we have a picture taken from the street that shows the, uh, the coop.
Okay, but our, our regulation allows for twenty maximum, correct?
Twenty total, yeah, so the, the total amount of chickens permitted in, at any one property in the town of Farming- Farmington is twenty, r- rather they're full or the chicks, so that the total quantity at any one time is twenty.
Okay, we can be twenty. I have no problem. I was thinking, because the law says six chickens, I said, okay, I, we can be twenty, we can be nineteen. You know, I own for meat, you know? I want to keep six regular chickens, and the rest is going to be for food, for meat.
Okay, okay, so twenty is your maximum. However you count it, okay?
Yeah, 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 you can come anytime you want.
I can come anytime, okay.
I can give you one for free.
No, it's okay. You ke- you keep it. Uh, so, alright, so we have an enclosure where, uh, the poultry will live. And, uh, what happens with the waste? What are you doing with the waste material?
Well, I have, I have my own garden, and you know, that's why I have my own garden. I mix there.
Okay, so it's used on your property?
Yes.
Okay, and how about food for the chickens? Where do you store that?
Oh, I have my own garage, and I have also, if you see, the end of my, because I think you have a camp, you have pictures. I have a camper next to my, you know, my, most of the time I pick, I keep it in my garage.
Okay, so we have the food storage issue covered. He's, um, the waste material, he's composting or whatever. He has agreed to twenty maximum. And, uh, you ha- you don't have any roosters, right? Or you don't plan to have any roosters?
Well, no, I'm, uh, I'm not going to keep my, you know, some, when you buy small chicks, you don't know what they're going to grow up. You don't know what they're going to be. They can be roo- so they can be chickens, ma. Before the Christmas, you know, they're going to gun everyone. Because you buy, when you buy small chicks, you don't know how they're going to be, or they grow up, you know? My, I, I, no, 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 it's not going to be roosters, believe me, no roosters.
Okay, thank you. We do not allow roosters in our, um, town, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Alright, so ho- so hold on. You, you cannot go yet, please. Alright, Commissioners, do you have any questions? Patrick?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Cohen, um, so I'm not that familiar with, with, uh, chickens and, and honestly, I didn't know, you didn't know what they were until they got older. So what you're saying is, you're gonna buy fourteen chicks, right? You buy those. And then one, and then before they, if they are rooster, before they make noise, you're gonna either get rid of them or eat them? Is that what I'm?
Yes, correct, correct, correct. Before, yes. I'm going to leave to grow up. Doesn't matter. I buy small chicks for six, seven months to grow up, and they're going to eat the food, the meat.
And then at six, seven months, um, if they are roosters, are these things, I mean, obviously?
You know, the small chicken, they never, they never do it for six months. They are still small, believe me.
Okay, so they don't make noise, because obviously, our regulation is to.
No, I know, I know the law say no roosters. Believe me, if some rooster could be there, it's not going to be anymore, believe me. When they grow up, I'm going to, to eat before they start singing.
Okay, fair enough. Alright, yeah, thank you. That's, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Alright, Mike?
Yeah, I have a few things. Um, first off, sir, you're giving me a little anxiety driving with the cell phone in your hand on the highway.
Yeah, because you see, I have my highway. It's difficult for me, believe me.
Yeah. Be careful.
Yeah, and I, I'm a tractor trailer driver. It's not a small car.
Okay. Uh, the coop being ten feet from the side and rear property lines, it looks like that's against the property line?
No, no, the, the coop is, I think it's about, uh, fifteen, ten to fifteen feet far away from my neighbors', uh, borders, no?
Whose rock wall is that in that picture?
The wall?
There's a, looks like there's a rock wall.
Oh, it's not. It's my, it's my own. They are my own, because, uh, I ha- I ha- I have, I buy some s- stones to buy, you know, to fix my yard in front. And some, you know, everything, uh, leftover, I, I collect over there. It's my yard.
And what's to the, what's to the back of that?
The back, um, after that is, uh, my neighbor.
And Shannon, does that look like?
It's a fence. It's a fence. After the, after the stones, it's a fence.
Shannon, does that look like it's ten feet from the property line?
It is, it is.
I wanna say, uh, Garrett, are you still on the phone?
Yes, yeah, there's a fence at the back that I was able to measure ten feet off of.
Okay, so you were able to confirm that from the fence line to the rear of the coop, there's a ten-foot clearance?
Right, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and I, I see in the, uh, there was a complaint from a neighbor. Was that because of wandering chickens, or?
No, no, before, it was for the roosters.
The rooster, and we've, he's indicated the rooster has been removed, and it's, we've.
Yeah, yeah, you know, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm talking about, you know, it was, uh, I think it was last year. When they complete, the next day, I had two left roosters. It was for last year. And I, I, I eat them both. I, 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 I don't like to use this word. I kill them both, you know? Because, uh, somebody complained next day. I said, enough, you know? But I don't think you have a more comple- complaint about that. I remember last year it was only one. I, this year, I don't, it was a long time ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
No further questions.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. How about you? Thank you, Louis. How about you, Scott? Questions for applicant?
No, I'm all set. My questions were asked. Thank you.
Sure. Matt?
Thank you, sir.
No, no additional questions from those asked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Liz?
No additional questions. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
And James?
I'm all good.
Alright, I am all set also.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so, but this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone in attendance that wishes to speak in favor or opposition of this application?
We do. Okay, just hang on one second. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Cohen, I'm gonna ask, uh, we're, uh, if we could, we're gonna let the public speak right now. This is not a dialogue back and forth. The, the public will have an opportunity to speak. They'll address their comments and concerns to the Commission. When the public is finished, then you are welcome to respond when the, uh, when the chair asks you to respond. So at this point, we're just gonna, I'm gonna, so just so you're not having to toggle your mute on and off while, um, at this particular point in time. But if I will just, you're gonna just sit tight. We're going to, uh, let the public have their comment, and then you will have an opportunity to reply when the chair lets you know to do so, okay?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, so, um, Mary Francini, you have your hand up. You may go ahead and address the Commission. Please provide your full name and address and any comments you wish to share with the Commission.
Okay, my name is Mary Francini. I live at one fifty-two Red Oak Hill Road, right next to Louis. Um, he's had roosters there for, at least since the winter. Um, I know that sometimes they're not, I don't hear them, but they're always back the next day, or, you know, so I, I understand the Commission's gone out to make visits there. Um, I don't mind having twenty chickens, but the roosters, it's just too much. They, they, they ca- they cock-a-doodle-doo at, you know, four, four forty-five, five o'clock in the morning, and it's just, it's just, uh, you know, we, we lived here, and it's nice and peaceful, and then just to hear these chickens, it's for roosters, I'm sorry. It's, um, and, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, Farmington doesn't allow them. So that's my comment that, you know, they've been there all along, and whether he says they're there or not, um, they are. And I just don't, um, I don't know what to do going forward. Um, you know, he may remove them for a while, but then they come back. So I'm just wondering what that process is. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, anyone else?
Okay, uh, anyone else that has called in that wishes to offer comments regarding one fifty-six Red Oak Hill Road, a special permit to raise chickens? Please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and you'll be acknowledged to address the Commission. Okay, Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised regarding this matter.
Okay, so I guess let's ask, um, the applicant to respond. So, he says there were roosters last year. They were removed. The neighbor's saying, no.
So, Miss, Mr. Cohen, have there been roosters on the, the property within the last four to six weeks?
I had one. Uh, he just started singing, and I already done with that.
Okay. Alright, would you be agreeable to, uh, to us making an inspection of the property?
Anytime, anytime you want, you can come, anytime you want.
Okay, maybe that's a, uh, we can work with the animal control officer and
Sure.
have her do an inspection with us.
Okay. So, so, alright, so we have that response. There are no other. So, all right, so we have that response, no other applicants, uh, any of the commissioners want to ask, uh? Mr. Cohen, any additional questions? Before we close the hearing? Good, all right, at this point, I will close the public hearing. And I need a motion and a second before discussion, please.
Uh, okay, to, uh, to approve, right? Do you need that?
Uh, whatever you want to do with it.
Yeah, and we either approve it or not.
Okay, so, um, I'd like to make, uh, I'd like to make a motion, this Patrick Carrier, sorry, I'd like to make a motion. To approve the application by Louis Cohen, Cohen, for special permit to raise twenty. Uh, chickens at one fifty-six Red Oak Hill Road in an R twenty zone.
What, do we add conditions? How about the, uh, let's talk about conditions. Well, so do we want an inspection by animal control?
Okay, yeah, you know what, I was gonna say, um, yeah, I mean, in the past, we've always talked about. Potentially, um, having them revisit in a year. And most of the time, most, I think most of the time we don't, but this one seems like it's possible, might be a good idea. I, in my opinion, uh, only because, you know, there there have been roosters and I know we have the whole animal control option, um, but sometimes that's not the easiest, so. You know, we could all, my opinion is may, maybe we should revisit in a year.
Okay, so we're gonna do both, from what I understand, the animal control now and then one year review?
Plus the conditions in the report.
Plus, plus everything in the, um, report. Patrick?
I'm sorry, say it again now?
The conditions that are in the, uh, write-up, what's your name?
Oh, you know what, I didn't see that here, in the agenda review, yes.
Right, so there's five, but those five plus a review in one year, plus an inspection with staff and animal control.
Okay, so review in one year and, um, and then a visit from staff and animal control.
Yep.
Okay, and now when I do this motion here, do I just, do I have to read each one of these individually, these motions?
You can just, you can say that as as itemized in the agenda review, that's fine.
Okay, and then I'll add those two.
Yes, please.
Gotcha, all right, so, um, yeah, so Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application. By Lou, by Louis Cohen, for a special permit to raise chickens in an R twenty of them. At one fifty-six Red Oak Hill Road in an R twenty zone with the conditions itemized in the agenda review. And also the the additional conditions of staff and animal control. Visiting the property and also to have. Um, basically have this application come before us in one year to review.
Okay, and a second, please?
God, hold still a second.
Oh, in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, so discussion, anything else we want to add? Are we, no discussion on this one?
Because you just voted.
We just voted, okay, good. I'm not leaving.
We discussed it, it's been an interesting evening, all you're gonna have.
With all those, okay, so you're gonna talk to Louis or how does this?
No, so, uh, Louis will follow up, you'll be, you'll receive a, uh, letter in the the mail, we will also follow up to, uh. To do a visit to the property with animal control.
Anytime you want, guys, anytime.
Thank you.
Just call me before I be home, you know?
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you, and be careful.
For the time, thank you.
Be careful, thank you.
Take care, thank you.
You too. Okay, so yes, that I didn't mean to make matters even more confusing, but that's okay, all right.
Madam Chair, Mike Corbals, just a quick question, um, you know, it sounds like it's a. You know, a thing that comes and goes, uh, that condition of. Um, the inspection by animal control and town staff. Is that a, can we do that as a couple times a year thing or?
We will, so I'm gonna do it initially and then, um, we will. Hopefully, yeah, well, we can either set it on a schedule or we can do it initially and then, um. Do it if there's, uh, reports and complaints from the neighbors, I'm hoping to get this whole thing curtailed and, uh. He is, we have heard that multiple times, when you get the chicks, you have no idea, uh, whether you have a hen or a rooster. Until they mature, so, but yes, and then when there is the evidence of a rooster, then we generally give, uh, the owners. A reasonable timeframe in which to have that rooster removed, reasonable, a week to ten days, um, not a couple of months. Um, and everyone has their own means and methods of handling that situation.
Think he's got his down, thank you.
He certainly does.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mike.
Um, Madam Chair, may I interrupt just for one second, uh, Anna? I know you've, uh, you just called in, your item for twenty-nine Main Street, we took care of, so if you. Were, you're all set, the fence was approved, I did the, uh, the discussion for the commission, so there's. You're welcome to stay on and join us for the rest of the evening, but you're also, well, you can go ahead and hop off and I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right.
And, uh, yeah, that that's a good point, Mike and Shannon, thank you for staying on top of it. It is a neighborhood, right, especially?
Well, it is a neighborhood, right, it's not, right, you're you're not on a ten-acre farm.
Yep.
So it makes a difference. Absolutely, okay.
All right, on to an application from NHR Construction. And it's for an addition to a home at ten Red Coat Lane, R thirty zone. And who do we have?
Hi. Hi, I'm I'm Matt Adeel, I'm owner of NHR Construction, I'm representing Lynn Munson and her son Patrick, Patrick owns the home. Lynn is the individual who's hiring my company, um, so what we're looking to do is add a living space above the garage. So we're not changing the footprint of the house at all, we're utilizing existing foundation. Uh, and adding the, uh, living space in view.
All right. Are we gonna go through, like, what's the access, is it internal access, outside access?
So, right now, we have, we have internal access from. Internal, I'm sorry, access from, you see where the island is there? That, that's gonna be a shared, common access from her apartment to her son's house. And then we have the internal access, um. Over there in the right rear, um, which we're hoping to be able to put inside the garage heading up.
So the front of the house as well?
Uh, this is the front of the house, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so there's no, no additional doors being added to the front of the house?
Thank you.
No, just the two garage doors that are existing.
Right.
And then there's a staircase in the back?
So here's the, the front, so the the front, we're gonna add a window in this window and. This window is new and this window is existing?
Correct.
Yeah.
So those, those three windows, if you will, will be new.
And then this is the rear elevation, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So this is the door?
Well, that's the door going into the existing home, um.
Okay. So the door then to get, this is, so the door for her access then is on the side?
Correct.
Garage side.
Okay, so you'd walk in this door, but then you'd walk to the rear of the garage to access the stairs, because the stairs are in the rear.
Right.
But inside.
But inside, yeah.
Inside, correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And we're not, so it's the same height as the rest of the house?
Uh, yeah, because you're gonna see the patch of the roofs.
Yeah. Yep, thank you. And we're not adding to the back, right?
No.
That's, that's all, okay.
Yeah, that's it, so is there anything else to to add, Matt, or is that, that it at the moment?
I don't know what else I would add.
That's okay, that's fine, if that's it, that's fine. And we can have other, uh, commission questions.
Sure, yeah, thank you, thank you, um, I can think in my head, I'm still thinking about chickens. Now, I'm all set, um, thank you for walking us through this, um. And Patrick? Questions for, uh, Matt from NHR Construction about this addition?
This is more of a, um, I'm just trying to figure out exactly, so this is connected to the house, do we have an overall? Do we have a before, I think you flipped through everything, I was trying to catch it, but do we have a before and after picture of what this? What this residence is gonna look like?
There, there is, it's just a half, he did just a half floor plan and half elevation. So the rest, balance of the house is here off the edge of the page.
Right, so the. The existing house, uh, Patrick is, um. The twelve-foot section, right, that's, that's part of the existing living space, that's their, um, living room in there, so above that. It is the, is where her son's, uh, bedroom ends and then that bedroom would, but the new apartment. And there you go, so he's got the Gambrel style with the gable roof next to it.
Yep. Okay, so I, so I see, so those garage doors are already existing?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just the upper, can you flip back, uh, Shannon, to the other picture, I'm just trying to see how, what the house, you know?
So the doors, the the doors and this lower window are existing.
Mm-hmm.
So right, there's the lower window with the shutters. And you're seeing one door. It's a weird, you're seeing one door here, there's another door off the edge of the the photo. Uh, but you could see the double, the double window and shutter, and that's what you're picking up then. Here is the double window and shutter and you're seeing the first door and the the second door is out of the view of the photo.
Yeah, yeah, I see, okay, so, yeah, essentially, it's just the top floor. So it's just a second floor added, is it bumping out the back as well?
No.
Okay, and then I see it's, it's from what I see in the agenda review. It's quite a bit bigger than what, than what is around, what is the overall, it's thirty, it will exceed thirty-two hundred square feet of. Total area, what is it, do we know exactly what that, what the the area of the home is complete or total, I should say, with garage and everything?
Yeah, the addition will increase the total home area to thirty-two forty-eight, which gives you, uh, twenty-six fifty of living area. And the existing garage, I've got it, uh, fifty, uh, sorry, five hundred and ninety-eight square feet.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to get a feeling of what what it looks like compared to what, you know, what's around, I mean, I see we have the, the other comparisons, um. That's all my questions for now, I'll listen to the other commissioners.
Thank you, Patrick, Mike Corbals?
Um. You know, while, while it's certainly a significant, uh, increase in the square foot living area, um, I think by not. Uh. Expanding off the current. You know, layout of the house, I think is helpful, um. Really don't have any questions right now, thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this time either, thank you.
All right, and Matt?
Ju- just quick for me, um, the garage space, is that staying the same and it's really just the room above the garage spaces where the expansion is? The garage and the the twelve-foot room you see on the page to the left of the garage. That will also be included in that living space.
Okay.
Got it, so the garage will be wider as well? No, no, I mean, it's all separated by.
So this is all existing on the first floor, this room with the double window in both garage bays are all existing. They're just, this, this is us, this portion of the home is a single story and the garage is single.
Yep.
With just a little bit of loft area above it, but. This is all single story, so this is all, what's new is the two-story above this single-story, like mudroom, if you will. Um, as you walk in from the garage, so we're gonna add second floor here and second floor living space above the garage and this. Breathe, you know, access way into the home.
Got it, that that answers my question, thank you.
Thank you, Liz?
Um, I have just a question about roof roof line, will it be one, will the new addition be the same roof line? Will it, I guess I kind of want to check out, so. Sorry. So it's going to continue straight across to the existing roof?
Right, so. Um, for for head-high purposes, we've kind of, and and for the, um. I don't know how to really word it, but we don't really want to try to match the Gambrel, would would add pillars, right? So we we wanted to just come straight up, you know, because you already had alternating roof lines, so. You know, to get to the maximum, maximum head-high, we wanted to just come straight up and 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 stay at the same level, but they won't be the, won't be that Gambrel style.
Okay, yes, I understand that, I just didn't know if it was going to tower above, if it was going to be higher than the existing roof line.
No.
That's what I wanted to check, and then in the back, you're just trying, I saw, I noticed, um, you're deciding between a. A slightly different roof line to get more headspace over the stairs, was that correct?
Correct.
Um, okay, that was my one question, thank you.
Thanks, Liz. And, uh, James?
Um, I don't have any additional questions, so it's already been asked.
All right, thank you, um, communication, has, have the neighbors been informed?
Uh, all the notices were completed and we checked.
No comments.
Uh, we have not received any written correspondence, no.
Okay. That was the only, um, additional question. Uh, for Matt, so let's turn this over for. Uh, anyone that's attending this evening, do we have anyone?
So if anyone has called in wishing to offer comment. On the home expansion for ten Red Coat Lane, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you'll be acknowledged to offer comments to the commission. Again, anyone that's called in regarding the ten Red Coat Lane application, please raise your hand in the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
All right, commissioners, uh, do you feel like you have enough information to make a decision? Do you have any other questions?
I mean, I have a comment, Patrick Carrier, um, I mean, I see there's, so, obviously, when this comes before you. You're trying to get a visual of what it's gonna look like and you want it to fit in the neighborhood, um. And. It would be nice, I'm not saying that this is what I want done, but I, it would be easier if you can actually see it overall, now with that said. Um, you know, because this is kind of hard to to see, you're you're looking at it and you're trying to kind of see it in your head, um, and it's difficult to visualize. Uh, with that said, everybody's been notified and. And it, nobody's participating in the public hearing, so I guess it's, you know, um, so I'm just gonna leave that, my comment is that, I guess.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? Shannon, I have a question for you about the accessory portion of it, so that stays on. So that's legal, it's attached, obviously. Um, so. The homeowner knows it has to be a relative or a caretaker, like, how does that?
Correct, so all of that, the documentation was shared, well, it was shared with, um. The applicant, Mr. Adele, I'm assuming, Matthew, did you share the agenda review with? The owners?
Yes.
And what we can do and have done in the past, um, as part of the building permit, require a. We can put these conditions into a, a, a letter, if you will, require the owner to sign it and we keep it in our records. So we can do that as well.
Okay. That works. Anyone else? We're good, okay, so at this point, we're gonna close the public hearing. Uh, for an application from NHR Construction. For special permit for accessory apartment greater than six hundred and fifty square feet. An expansion of home in excess of thirty percent located at ten Red Coat Lane, R thirty O S zone. All right, so we need a motion and a second, please.
Um, yep, uh, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to approve the application by NHR Construction LLC. For a special permit for accessory apartment greater than six hundred and fifty square feet and expansion of home in excess of thirty percent. Located at ten Red Coat Lane in an R thirty zone, O S zone, uh, with the condition. zone, O S zone, uh with the condition with the conditions that are itemized in the agenda review.
That works, uh second?
Matt Hudfagner, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed? All right, we're good. As presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um, let's see here, next item for public hearing, and actually this one we get to move, it says, application from Steven, Steve Joseph.
Correct, I need the commission to, uh, we need to open the hearing, but then we need a motion to continue to October twenty-fourth, the notices were not completed properly.
All right, so let, let's see, so we have an item from Steve Joseph for special permit for home business for retail sales and classes related to custom jewelry made on site and sale of men's clothing and accessories located at fifty-five Lovely Street, R twenty, R twelve zone. So the meeting is open, and now we need a motion in a second to move it forward to the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Please.
Sorry, to continue, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And, and you said, what was the date, I missed it, October?
Twenty-four.
October twenty-fourth. Okay. Okay, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion um, to continue the public hearing um for special permit by Steve Joseph for home business retail sales and classes related to custom jewelry made onsite and sale of men's clothing and accessories located at fifty-five Lovely Street in an R twenty, R twelve zone.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're good, item will be continued.
Wait, did I, did I say the, the date, I don't even remember if I said the date.
Uh, we got it, Patrick, you're good, it's gone, it's October twenty-fourth.
Thanks for testing us, yeah, you did. Woo, I even got that one, thank you, Patrick. Um, all right, the last public hearing item, new public hearing item is uh an application from Legacy Church. It's an application for special permit and site plan modification for church use at fifteen Executive Drive, C one zone. And who do we have, Shannon?
I believe we've got Wayne, Wayne, I'm not sure who else you have with you.
Yeah, yes, uh Wayne's here, I keep with Enterprise Builders. Um, I was hired as the construction manager, um, for Legacy Church. Uh, we have with us, uh Mark Herrera from Ken Borison Architects. And uh Eric and Melissa Peoples of Legacy Church and uh Coke.
Yes, uh, so in your description, that pretty much covers everything we wanna do, um, Legacy Church is looking to renovate the existing Malibu Fitness Center to uh suit their needs to provide um worship services on Sunday mornings, um and we've renovated the facilities to include the worship hall and some accessory spaces uh that serve while the services are going on. We have a series of uh kids gathering spaces, various ages, uh nursery, toddler, K through three. Uh, we have a small area for kid worship. And then we have a little cafe uh to the right of the entryway, and then a, a reception area to the left, and then you can see the main worship hall uh in the center of the page. The worship hall was designed to uh fall in line with the parking count. We are not increasing uh any of the uh payment services for parking, so uh we've made adjustments, we had a hundred and twenty-seven parking spots originally. Uh, we reduced it by one because we added a van space that was required by code. So the capacity count now matches, so it's uh three hundred and seventy-six people capacity. Uh, and the capacity is based upon the worshippers and their children, but they're not all in the same hall at the same time, so uh, as I've been told by the pastors, um, we're looking at usually eighty percent capacity, uh if it exceeds that they will look to go to uh possibly a second service uh after the first service is done. There are three existing tenant spaces. Um, our original submission listed a nail salon. Um that has since fallen through, and they uh declined to extend their lease, so that space uh is gonna get absorbed, and that's the nursery and the toddler area. So that was the old uh nail salon, so now it's gonna be uh nursery and toddler spaces for the church's use on Sunday. Um, we've increased the impervious surfaces by small fractions of a percentage because we've added some concrete sidewalks at the uh three new uh egress doors that we've had to add because of the, the use of the space, so we have one in the back, uh there's a five by five ad. Uh, and then we have the two in the front um that lead out to the parking lot, and we have a little bit of uh new concrete sidewalk there uh for egress, and that's required by code, so we've ticked up the percent, the percentage, but we're still below the fifty percent.
Okay. And are you all set, sir? I apologize if
Yeah, no, I think that covers everything, um, any questions?
Yep, we'll, we'll definitely rotate um uh through the commissioners, I just, before we get started, to just hopefully alleviate any confusion, it's tenant space A, was that the nail salon? I might
No, the tenant space A, tenant space B, uh, they're gonna remain. One is a gymnastics uh palace, if you will, and the other one is a, is a publication office.
Office, okay. And that's part of that the church business, or?
No, they're, they're separate, totally separate.
Okay.
Existing separated, and they have their own uh uh entrances, uh, but part of our plan is to create uh new bathrooms for those because they currently share the bathrooms with the uh Malibu Fitness Center. But we're gonna be closing off that access and providing them with their own facilities.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for the background on this. All right, Patrick, your first questions?
Uh, yeah, so i- in the agenda review, the conditions, um, so in here it says tenant A and B. Um, it's, it talks about limited to office type use. Um and that other uses shall be required, you know, to, to review with the commission, so Shannon, are those, is that considered office type use as they stand?
Well, gymnast, I wasn't aware there was gymnastics, uh, so that was never discussed, and the, the parking ratio, it said tenant A business and tenant B business, and they were parked out as um a, as an office, uh, like a regular business office, uh realtors or law office uh type space, so I don't which, which use, or which space is the gymnastics space, and what are they doing? Are they doing gymnastics, like traditional gymnastics classes that run weeknights and weekends?
No, they, they, they run limited hours, and they don't coincide with the church's uh scheduled service hours, um, so they won't be uh occurring at the same time, and it's, we have not gained access to that facility, but it's our understanding that it's more of a tumbling uh area as opposed to gymnastics and so on and so forth, but we have not confirmed that exact use.
Okay, but it's fine to have a stipulation that it is not operating, uh, because again, there's there is not one additional parking space on this
No, no. They do not operate at the same time, so when the church is in service, they have full use of the hundred and twenty-six spots. Uh, and then during the week, when the publication uh office and the, and the gym, gymnasium are open they have use of the parking that they need.
Okay.
There's no conflict between the three.
Okay, uh, that'll be a condition of the approval.
Yep. Got it.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that clarification, so, yeah, so that, that's what I was getting at, so A and B will not be, it's gonna be, it's gonna, the condition's gonna remain the same, uh, that we have on the agenda review. Um, and then, of course, the nail salon doesn't exist anymore, is what I heard, correct, that's getting um changed over to
Yeah, yeah, yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
So conditions one and three can be removed based on the discussion.
Okay, so one and three, okay.
So we'll leave two, tenant A and B will not be permitted to operate during Sunday service hours.
Yep. Okay, that, uh, yeah, no more questions for me, thank you.
Thanks, Patrick, Mike?
Um the uh, the previous, like, second level area of Malibu Fitness, is that gonna be used for anything?
Uh, it's phase two, uh offices. But we're not doing anything with it right now, except uh changing the locations there. So that's there where the hand is right now, that's be, that's relocated. And the one across and to the right is existing to remain. So that gets us uh for phase two, that'll get us our uh direct egress outside from the mezzanine space, it will be still uh listed as a mezzanine space, but the plan is to uh create office space in the mezzanine level, similar to some of the office spaces that we have on the ground floor level, so we're duplicating uh uses.
Okay, thank you, um. I see that there's a, a, a very minor increase in the impervious uh surface, where, where is that on the plan?
That is the, those are the concrete pads that were pouring or sidewalks. So we have one there, one there, that connects the egress door to the sidewalk across the uh landscape area, and then we have a pad out in the back for the new door that we're adding uh for that rear hallway.
Okay. Shannon, what's the um, what's the allowed impervious surface, because I see that we have a, do a five, six vote on that?
Correct, so it's up to fifty percent uh is the absolute maximum. Anything between forty and fifty percent requires a five, six vote. Anything forty and under is by right.
Okay. All right, uh, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Scott?
Thanks, Liz, do we, what are the hours for the, the Sunday services? Do we know?
Uh, the public services are from uh ten to noon, basically.
Okay, any, any concerns, I know from some personal experience, there's a soccer facility next door. Any concerns about traffic in that area on a Sunday morning? Has that come up at all?
No, no, and uh we've notified all the neighbors.
Okay. Okay, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
No further questions, thank you.
Sure, and Liz?
Uh, we've talked about Sunday services only, are there any um midweek, any celebratory events, uh Christmas Eve, um the, you know, Good Friday, things like that, will there just be services on Sunday, or will other religious events take place there?
Well, that's a great question, uh, hi, I'm Eric Peoples, by the way, thanks for that, um we actually are, have been meeting Irving Robbins for the past I think almost five years, and so um we presently do a um we actually do a Christmas DVD service, that we did each service, no one will show up. Uh, but we, or, or, so we um, we'd probably like to do something like that, I, I think, um just in thinking about that, first planning, yeah. Is and I, yeah, I would say that, that's a great, great question, we've
Okay, so that would be other uses at, at other times for um when, I'm just thinking back to the parking issue, you know, we got, we got all those people who want to come and, and celebrate, and, you know, um
Just for uh insight, our present uh attendance is averaging about a hundred and fifty people on a Sunday, so at three eighty uh, or three seventy-six, that um, we'd love that to be full, but uh the, the present rate, uh, we're, we're not there, so it could be some time from that.
Okay, you and every other church or religious organization would love have not enough parking, that I, I understand from my, my own church-going experience. Um, okay, so that was, that was, I think, uh, yeah, that was my only question, thank you.
Thanks, Liz. And James?
No further questions for me either.
Um, so, uh, welcome again, um, where are you coming from, please, I, and if you said it, I missed it, sorry. It sounds like an existing church, right, is that what I heard?
Irving Robbins Middle School.
Okay, I did not know that, okay. All right, so now you're moving into your own building, uh the, the seating, is that stadium seating, or am I totally misreading it?
Just floor seating.
Or, just floor, okay. Um, let's see, is there anything else? So there were some comments back uh from the town?
There were, there were engineering comments, I think they've addressed most of them, but we've left it as a condition, just that all the, the September thirtieth comments are addressed to the satisfaction of town staff, which is typical.
Yeah.
No parking permitted on Executive Drive and Corporate Avenue, I'm sure if you've been to the property, you've seen the signs. Um, because of the robust use of the, the, the facilities in that area, uh, the town had to, and enact a no parking regulation on those streets, and that will be enforced for all individuals. Um there was a, a sign shown on the elevation that was submitted in, well, uh, late yesterday.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's just the graphic representation of what we would propose as a new signage.
Sure.
Um, but that's not part of this phase.
Okay, good, correct.
So, when, when, when the sign is designed and installed, we will uh follow the uh town protocols and all proper uh reviews.
Right, yeah, just, I, I've got an email back to, I was late today, but uh, correct, there's a separate sign permit with TPZ and building permit required for the installation of the sign at the time that you're ready to move ahead with that. So we understand that it's a graphic representation only for this purpose of this evening.
Yes.
Um, and I just, there's no change to the exterior parking lot lighting, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so that minor changes outside, just that extra
Just the parking for, for ADA and the emergency egress from the building.
Yeah. And that, okay. All right, so uh, it sounds like the commissioners are all set, is there anyone in the public?
Correct, and I guess too, for the record, we did not receive any written correspondence regarding this application, but uh if anyone from the public has called in and wishes to speak regarding this application uh for Legacy Church at fifteen Executive Drive, please raise your hands using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. And we have a Andrew Winky, if you could uh unmute your microphone, your full name and address. And then uh direct your comment to the commission, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, so I'm Andrew Winky, uh, address would be ten Executive Drive, Farmington. And I just have some comments or concerns on this, um, as it's been stated over and over, the parking is truly a problem. Uh, we have tenants who are twenty-four seven. With the F set, F S A across, that alone creates parking issues on the weekend, which over floods into not only Malibu's, but also our lot, where we've experienced damage in the past, so we do have grave concern about the, about the parking, maybe wish for some sort of condition for maybe a parking impact study or something of that nature. Um, and then in addition, we do have concerns about the inconsistent use, that is, to the rest of the Farmington Corporate Park. And would like to know the impact it would have on revenue for the town and taxes for for the town.
And that's
That's not under review, so tied, the, the town taxes, et cetera, is not under uh review for TPZ.
Okay, apologies, thank you.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, thank you for, yeah, speaking up.
Um, but thank you for your, your comments regarding the parking, do you have anything, anything else you wish to share with the commission regarding this, this area, this matter?
No, that is it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for calling in.
Anyone else?
Uh, does anyone else have questions or comments for the commission related to the Legacy Church application at fifteen Executive Drive? Uh, does anyone else have questions or comments for the commission related to the Legacy Church application at fifteen Executive Drive? Please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. No, Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised.
Alright, so I, I guess back to the applicant, um, if you can respond to the concern um, of the caller. Regarding the parking, we would appreciate it.
Uh, well, as, as we said, the church services are uh. Ten to, ten to twelve on Sunday morning. Uh, other than that, there's limited uh, use of the parking spaces um, during the week. There might be five to ten cars for um, church staff that come, come and go during the week. But other than the Sunday morning uh, services, there's no uh. Extra parking, so we have the parking for tenant A and tenant B, and they're served for the limited hours that they're open. Um, and. I, I, we don't have any more people than the three hundred eighty that the parking allows. So, we won't be adding to the uh, the parking issues on Executive Drive during our services.
Okay. Uh, this is Town Planner Rutherford. When you uh, you mentioned that there might, at some point um. As one of the commission members made reference to have services for religious holidays. Perhaps there's weddings or other special events that take place. Um, would you be agreeable to a condition that the. That those, the tenant A and B spaces then are not actively being. Are not, their hours of operation will, they will not be operating during not only the Sunday church services. But other special services to the extent that the parking demand is, is met. I understand if you're doing, look, if you're having a kid's playgroup and there's ten or twenty families coming, then there's no need to shut down tenant A and B. But if you're having a wedding or a holiday service that is attended by the majority of the. Uh, congregation, then obviously you can't have tenant A and B, you can't have gymnastics running. At the same time, and having kids coming and going for gymnastics class.
Yeah.
So you've got to manage, that, that expectation has to be managed, and it needs to be understood clearly that this is going to be enforced.
Yes, uh, that won't be a problem. Again, as we've mentioned, we've been uh, really tenants that are in Robbins Middle School, flag football, soccer, et cetera. I think we've been really good neighbors, uh, and I think also too, uh, the idea of having. Three hundred and seventy-six people for a holiday event would be absolutely amazing, but uh, we will make sure that. Um, we'll, we'll be good neighbors. Uh, we have uh. I'll say this, being attentive and being aware of what's going on, being able to have a conversation with our neighbors, I think that that's uh. That's a part of our, our history, and we welcome that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And then, you know, it's. Have we gotten phone calls about the parking issues here, or what the caller described, or?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, no, no, so, y- yes, there are no, like I said, there's, that's part of the reason we had to go to and um. Uh, no parking on Executive Drive and Corporate Avenue, because um, unfortunately, individuals. Could not navigate that appropriately on their own.
Our son was a part of FSA, so we were well aware of the.
Sure. Okay, so, sounds like everyone is agreeable, let's hope for the best. I mean, I need to leave it that way, but we have a plan in place.
Mm-hmm.
And in agreement, okay?
And it makes sense.
Yep, it does. Alright, commissioners, before I close the public hearing, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Patrick Carrier, just one question. So there was, there was a mention of converting s- um, space upstairs. To possibly office space, is that, so Shannon, is that something that is already part of the parking calculation?
It is not, um, I'm assuming, and uh, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming since the stairwell is all, every, this is internal, that this space. Should it be developed in the future? It would be office space for the church, is that correct?
Yes, all, all of the, all of the e- extra space that's allocated for phase two. Uh, is accessory use to the church. And it will not be adding to the capacity count. It's just um, additional meeting spaces on the first floor. And uh, the mezzanine, which sits over what is listed as the high school gathering and the kids worship. There's a forty-five or fifty foot by fifty foot mezzanine over that central area. And that's gonna be office space um, for the church staff. And that'll mostly be occupied during the week when there is no service. So, there's really no added um, parking count required. Um, church services on Sunday, nobody's in the offices. Uh, during the week, like I said, there might be five to ten cars um, for church staff during the week. But that's all, that's all uh, noted as phase two, and we don't have a timeline on that yet.
Okay, so, so accessory to the church, so.
It's all accessory to the church, so it's all, we're not adding to the uh. The capacity of the worship hall, which is driving our parking count.
Okay, okay, thanks, yeah, so I, I just wanted to get that on record, um, just so, so it's clear in the future.
And the three hundred and eight, the, just to clarify, the three hundred and eighty people in the worship hall that, uh, the capacity. That's inclusive of all the other spaces, so. If there's three hundred and eighty people. Uh, the majority is probably seventy percent, or eighty percent of that will be in the worship hall. And the other twenty or thirty percent may be in uh, the gathering spaces, the children's worship. That sort of thing.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, no more questions.
Thanks, Patrick. Anyone else, commissioners?
Adam Chair, Michael Bolz, um, just regarding the parking again. You know, as the applicant said that they've uh, their son was part of FSA, they know the uh, the weekend tournaments down there can get. A little crazy, um.
Right.
For uh, just for your own, um. Keeping it parking to yourself, uh, maybe consider fifteen Executive Drive only parking, cause I can imagine, you know. People overflow parking in your parking lot, and then come ten AM, you know, half your spaces are taken.
Yes, yes, we, we have experienced that at uh, the school with the flag football. Uh, people trying to figure out either we had a really packed service, or church wasn't happening, so we should. Felt that, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mike. Now, do you already own this building?
Well, as soon as we get our approval, we'll be planning on that.
And what we're talking about, how long do you think it will take to get it ready for you to occupy and use?
About five months.
Alright, so Shannon, there's no one on the line, right?
Well, we, we had one, oh, right, we had, we had, we had one, um, and no one else had raised their hand, and no one else has since.
Okay, so commissioners had a chance twice to ask questions. So I think it's appropriate to close the public hearing at this point, on this application. Okay, so we need a motion and a second. For this application, go ahead.
Oh yeah, okay, yeah, so Patrick Carrier and the, so I'm gonna make the motion, um, and then the conditions, so we're eliminating one and three. Um, so I'll read number two, and then just include four and five, that's sufficient for a motion?
Uh, yes.
Cause number two's got the added, which I'll do my best on, but uh.
Correct.
I'll just go for it, and we'll see what happens, okay, so Patrick. Um, I'd like to make the motion, oh, let me find it here. Like to make a motion, um, to approve the application by Legacy Church for special permit and site plan modification. For church use at fifteen Executive Drives in a C-one zone. With the following conditions, I'll say as presented, and also with the, with tenant A. And B will not be permitted to operate during the Sunday services, service hours, or other services or events. That will create a parking shortage. And then also, I'd like to include conditions four and five that are on the agenda review.
Sounds good. Yeah, we're good, okay, fine. Alright, thank you, Patrick. How about a second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have our vote, five, six.
Yeah, right, so it's unanimous, so we hit the five, six.
Okay, alright, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Alright, um, so that is it for public hearings, however. We have.
We're not finished.
Yeah, I know, for new public hearings, right?
We're not finished, so we have a little old business to take care of.
Yes, we do, so, alright, that's true. So, call for construction, the application for the eleven. Lot cluster subdivision of one sixty eighth Coppermine Road. So we had a public hearing, we closed the public hearing on the twenty-sixth of September, and we have. Technically sixty-five days to vote, right, from September?
Correct.
From September, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and Shannon, uh, you provided us with the documentation, I'm sorry, pulling it up.
Oh yeah, yeah, so I've already opened those, but the, so they, uh, at the end of the meeting on September twenty-sixth. Um, commission agreed to have me draft motions, so there's a draft. Approval, a draft denial, and uh, a draft set of conditions, that should uh, you folks. Feel that's uh, appropriate, um, and it's completely up to your. Discussion now. Uh, I, I can pull up any of the old documents. You can discuss it amongst yourselves, you can ask me questions.
Yep.
There's just no new information. That's, that's, so if you need me to pull something up, you need a clarification on something that had already been presented. All of that's fair game.
Alright, so, thanks. That, and, and thank you for the documentation, it was great, it was concise, and thank you for the list of conditions. Um, I, for clarification purposes, can you remind us, so my concern is uh. Should I go through the commissioners, I guess I, if I started already, does it matter?
It, it, the order is up to you, man, here, that's fine. There's no.
Patrick, are you, you're okay if I go, start it off?
Uh, yeah, so just for the record, I did, I did listen to the, to the entire meeting. And, and I, and actually, there was a lot of good discussion in the end, um, especially in the um. What do you call it, in the planner's report, when, when you guys were talking about how we should vote and what, what standards, um, so that was helpful, but yes, I, I did. Um, I listened to the entire meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, you know what, I'll let you just do your thing. Uh, did you see the possible conditions? That uh, Shannon provided us with?
Yes, I did, and, and, yes, I did.
Okay, so that, a lot of that came with the, I think, um, the discussion, I think that you're, the lively discussion we had. Uh, at the end of the meeting. Um, does anyone need a, so I, I don't know if we wanna.
Are you, so.
Review.
You can go through everyone.
Yeah.
And then see what everyone thinks.
That's fine.
And then we can go from there as to if there's a consensus for which direction the commission is leaning.
Uh-huh.
And then go from there.
Alright, that's, that's fine, we'll stick to the original order, and I will have a chance to ask my questions, yes. Alright, so we're on you, Patrick, so thank you for reviewing and getting yourself up to date on it. Um. So, we can vote today, we still have time. Uh, are you ready to vote today? Do you have questions regarding? Um, one way or the other, that you would need in support of, or denial, or anything Shannon can ask, I mean, answer?
Uh, no, I, I read through all the conditions, um, and they were all discussed, I believe, or most of them anyways. Um, and, and I, I agree with them, um, no, I'm, I'm comfortable voting myself. And, and I have enough information at this point.
Alright, Mike?
I thought about two of the main concerns coming from uh, the neighbors, one being uh, traffic and accidents. Um. Unfortunately, I know a lot about that data as far as the accident report came, and, and some of that can be misleading, and that. Uh, those hap, those accidents happen on one seventy-seven, with the closest cross street being Coppermine Road, um. So I, I was comfortable with that. Uh, the second one being. Uh, asking the, the tough question of town staff about, um, you know, whether this would, in their professional opinion, if this would. Possibly impact the neighbors with, with more water flow onto their property or into their basement. And uh, you know, I think our uh. Our town staff is about as good as it gets, and I uh, I trust their professional opinion that this will not uh. Affect the neighbors, um, as well as the improvements that the applicant has done to ensure that, so I am uh, I'm comfortable voting.
Alright, thank you. Scott, how about you?
Yeah, I agree, I'm, I'm comfortable voting tonight as well.
Okay, Matt?
Uh, same, no, no more questions, I'm comfortable voting, thank you.
Alright, how about you, Liz?
I too am comfortable voting, I, I agree completely with Mike and staff, and everyone has done a very thorough job. And appreciate all the time and effort, thank you.
Thank you. I, I agree also that between the town and the applicant, every step has been taken to minimize. Um, impact to the neighborhood. The phases though, I, I don't remember how the phasing went, but the basins have to be built, like, probably first. Right, just in case we do have a back-to-back storm, or like, what is the plan? Please remind me.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring it up.
Thank you.
So this. Gosh. So there is a construction phasing plan, was part of the plan set presented uh, and provided to the commission, and I believe we. Uh, this plan actually was brought up at, at one point during the uh. The meetings, so there's a phase one, a phase two, and a phase three. So phase one involves the construction of both stormwater basins. Um, and some of the clearing, uh, upland clearing and uh, that's required. In order to, to get in and actually do the construction and get the, some of the piping network in. And then, uh, it also includes the, the, the start of the entrance drive. Phase two includes the majority of the work needed to then get the roadway in. And that would include the installation of utilities, including the stormwater uh, catch basins and any. Sanitary sewer, gas, water, electric, all of that goes in. Uh, in preparation of this roadway, and then the um, the subbase material goes in. As part of doing that. Obviously, there's grading that's gonna take place and start of the formation of these handful of lots on the west side of the road. Um, and then this would be left in a stabilized condition. In addition, um. We, one of the requirements, uh, and either engineer in common and condition is that. There is settling basin, so there's separate um, stormwater settling basins that are required. For the construction of each lot, so there's a, a stockpile area, there's a roach control separate for each lot. And then there's a, a stormwater settling basin, a temporary settling basin for each spot. Uh, during construction to help alleviate the stormwater runoff uh, from. The construction of these lots running directly into the final basins. We wanna try to preserve these basins as much as possible, um. For the final development, so we don't want construction sediment washing, washing into them. But they will all be constructed and formed, so in the event of a large storm during construction, certainly the capacity is there. Um, but all the, the piping and impervious uh, would, coverage would not be there yet. So, but they, that is the first, the idea is to get those in. Get them seated, get them established, so that they can start to uh, handle larger flows of water.
And each phase, the applicant has to work with the town staff.
Yes.
Alright, and the maintenance of these detention ponds. And the maintenance of these detention ponds that's on the town?
So the maintenance is on the, uh, developer until they finish construction. And when the road is steated over to the town of Farmington, then we would also take ownership and responsibility of the basins. Yes.
Can this project, um, so I guess I'm re, I'll just be super clear. So, you know, ten bark right now. Just, it, it just doesn't look great from plain go out. It doesn't look like it's finished. I, I'm sure the applicant is. Going to finish it at some point. Like, could this be something where phase one is started, but second is never started, like? Is, is, is that at all in our control?
Um, it's, so there's certain timing aspects that are in our control. There's, um. I believe the subdivision has to be completed within five years. Um, from the approval and then I believe the statute requires a. Re. Uh, reapproval or an extension for another five years, but after that, then they would have to come back in, similar to what took place with, um, Bridgehampton Crossing.
Okay, yeah.
So there are time, time limits to complete. Um, certainly things like the pandemic, right? We get executive orders. The pandemic extended everybody's permitting timeframe by. Fourteen or sixteen months, something to that effect. So. There are other things that will play, that could play into that, but.
Yeah.
There are time limits and then it would expire, um. But, uh, obviously getting the basins in first or what. From, um. An engineering standpoint is what we are most concerned with. So we want those in and established, um. We honestly want a little lag time between getting the basins in to allow them to establish prior to moving to. Phase two and three.
Okay, so.
Good, good, good. We prefer some lag.
And then, I mean, everything that is in front of us exceeds what, right? What normally we do with. Um, stormwater, you know, drainage. You, you are, you and Bruce, everybody has calculated, triple calculated everything. I mean, um. We're working with D P or the applicant will be, right?
Uh, with T E P, they've got a, there's a. Right, so they've got to do, uh, a separate permit with D E P for construction stormwater activities.
All right, and you'll monitor all that.
Well, though, right, so they've, they've got their own submission requirement with deep and we've asked to be copied on that filing, correct?
Okay. I don't have any additions to the proposed conditions, but I think you, uh, and I think you have captured all of them. And, um. That, um, yeah, I mean, it's within guidelines. We have additional buffers. Conservation easement. And I have no other questions. And I am also ready to vote. So. Any other questions from commissioners? We're good. Okay, so it sounded like everyone was ready, Shannon. So, um. I do want it on this one, if we can, um. I just, one by one, if you can, uh, say yay or nay, that would be great. Uh, but before we do that, I need a, a motion and a second.
Hey, I'm sorry, Anas. We have the opportunity to sort of explain our thought process in this. Is that before, now or after we make the motion?
So. If I'm.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna jump in. This is Shannon. I would recommend a motion and a second, and then as part of discussion. Then each commissioner will have an opportunity to. Discuss their thoughts for either, uh, approval or just, because we, we, I prefer the motion be done in the affirmative. Right? And then you can vote. No, if you want, but I prefer, right, it's easier if we do. A motion in the affirmative. And then vote however you feel you need to vote.
Yeah, that, that's good. That's good with me. I was just checking on the timing.
Yeah, so motion and.
No issues.
And then, um, during, uh, the discussion, then you can. Discuss your thought process at that point.
Yeah. All right, so we need an affirmative motion, please, and then we'll do the discussion.
And should, um, excuse me, Patrick Carrier, so should we, a- as far as the conditions? Should we put that part a, as part of this motion?
I, ideally, yes, as a starting point. And then as part of the discussion, if folks want to change anything, then we can amend the motion.
Okay, so, and I'm not going to read through each mo, um, each condition, so I would just say one through. Uh, eleven.
One for eleven is, yeah, or there's, sorry, ten, because eleven is as, if there's anything else, it's.
Yeah, okay, one through ten provided by. Staff, I could just put that.
Yes.
Okay.
And they've been displayed on the screen, so I've put them up on the screen, so they're included in the recording.
Oh, okay, good, okay. All right, so Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion. Um. To approve the application by Calco Construction, Inc. for special permit. For an eleven lot cluster subdivision. Uh, at one sixty eight Coppermine Road in R thirty zone. Um. With the conditions one through ten that are currently on the screen.
Okay. One second.
Answer a second?
Yep.
Liz, Liz Sanford, I second.
Thank you. All right, and we have discussion. So.
Patrick.
What? Were you leaning on the vote?
Um, well, I'm, so I'm leaning towards. Voting yes, and my reasoning is because, you know, it meets the seven standards. I believe that were provided by Shannon, um. And e- especially the one of going above and beyond. When it, when it comes to, you know, affecting somebody else's property. Um, and I believe the applicant has gone above and beyond, and I'm comfortable with. Um, the review done by town staff. So. Uh, my feeling is that we're certainly not making it worse. But we've gone above and beyond. And I believe it could possibly help. And the reason that is, is because, you know, some of the, some of the trees are going to be removed by hand on top of it. So. Um, yeah, so that's my reasoning. I, I do think that we, I do think we met the seven standards.
Okay. Thank you. Mike?
Guess I got a little ahead of myself before. Um. So I, I would just reiterate, um, you know, obviously, the biggest concern was, uh. You know, the effect on neighboring properties and, and water issues and I, the town staff is, you know. Put my mind at ease with that, and the, uh, the applicant has done what they could to ensure that, you know. The best possible chance of that not happening, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I'm gonna echo my fellow commissioners. I'm, I'm in support of the application. I think. You know, we spent a lot of time. Ensuring that we could protect those neighbors to the best of our ability, and the town staff certainly did an excellent job. Um, helping with that. I think the, the applicant met all the conditions and exceeded and, you know, and probably all of them. Um, the expectations of the regulations set forth, so. I, I don't see any, any reason to deny the application.
Thank you. Matt?
Uh, first. Thank you for the patience of my fellow commissioners and town staff. For this one, I think it was really important for us to make sure we're all good, and we heard all the facts and. Especially around the drainage report, which I think was a big issue, certainly for me, a- as you heard with my questions. You know, for me, right, wearing sort of. Our, our administrative hat with this project, not necessarily legislative hat, right? Interpreting the rules as they are on the books, whether we agree or not. For me, I think I, I sort of have to approve here, right? It's a residential. Community, it's in a residential area. Certainly, the adequate safeguards are in place after a lot of questions about the drainage. And, and, and all of that. So again, for me. Um, the drainage and retention pods and really making sure the developer and the applicant was on top of that, really helped me. Sort of put me into the, um, sort of approved category. I hear the public comment and I definitely heard you, but I think. You know, this commission, my son, we, we kind of went above and beyond, making sure this was certainly adequately safeguarded and, and protected. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like a yes from you?
Yeah, I said approve, yep.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Liz?
Uh, I too feeling, I'm feeling that, um, leaning towards approval. Um, I agree with many of the points brought up that, that, that. We, we as a commission, as a town staff and as, uh, and, and the, um. Developers have all really done their due diligence, asked the questions. Tried to be creative with solutions. Um, I appreciate every, everyone's hard work and I, um, I, I do think that. We have met requirements and it, it seems. Uh, like a, a positive. So I'm definitely leaning towards approval.
Okay. All right, so thank you commissioners for your amazing questions, for all the time. We are volunteers and we had lots and lots of documentation to get through, never mind the meetings. And all the back and forth with town staff. Uh, we all know that this, uh. Project does meet the cluster subdivision rules. Um, this went through inland and wetland commission. Uh, with walkthrough and their extensive, uh, research and, uh, questioning, and it was approved. Um, all of us, um, had again wonderful questions and, um, the town just went above and beyond with the applicant. Um. I do think it's time for a vote. Um. The applicant absolutely has to follow. What was, what was presented and agreed upon. I think that conditions are very important. And thank you Shannon and Bruce. Um, for making sure that. They are, um, carried out the way this project was intended. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and now a vote. I'll still make you do the by person. It sounds like it's unanimous, but. All right, who's in favor? Patrick, yay or nay? All right, actually, excuse me.
I can.
Yeah, go ahead. You do that. Yeah, that's better.
Uh, so we'll just do a roll call, so we have a motion and a second. Um, we have the conditions we've discussed. So roll call vote. Patrick Carrier?
Yes.
Uh, I need my fullest, uh, micro bullish.
Yes.
Uh, Scott Halsted?
Yes.
Matt Hotvogner?
Yes.
Liz Stanford?
Yes.
And Ena St. James?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so. It's unanimous.
Thanks, everyone, for taking the time to look through all the documents. I know there was a lot of material to review.
All right. Planner's reports.
Uh. There's not, there's.
There's not much.
Uh, I know, hang on. I do want to just touch base on one. Hang on. Um. Just briefly, thank you all for responding to the emails, um, mid-cycle on our meeting for the, um. The ten forty-two Farmington Avenue, the rooftop units with Mike, Serena, and Claudia's. So I, I just want to close this out, so we've got it on the record since it came up at the September twenty-six meeting, so. Um. He did, uh, work with his. Uh, equipment vendor, they were able, a- as noted during the, um, uh, on the emails, they were able to move the vent. Stack to the side of the building and then the air intake to the rear of the building and they will all be. Uh. Painted a black matte finish. Um, so he, um. He did work through that. Um, so given his effort, I felt it, uh. I, I appreciated your efforts then in getting back to me on, uh, on the emails, so that it allowed me to then process the building permit. So he's been able to continue with his project rather than having to have him wait till this evening, so. Um, so that closes that item out, um, which is nice.
Yep.
And then, um. I've just considered, uh, I left on the complete streets. I didn't know if anybody's had a chance. Hopefully, you've had a chance to start to take a look at that, uh, document. Um, I do plan probably either, uh, the next meeting in October or the November meeting will have it on as a new business item to. Uh, endorse that document and, um. And then we'll proceed. I believe it proceeds to town council, uh, after we're finished with it. So, but we can endorse, uh, endorse that document. If there's any questions or comments on it. Uh, let us know, uh, Bruce Seer is the author of that document. Uh, he's been working on it with his bicycle advisory committee.
Okay.
So. Uh, just feel free to reach out to me if, if, as you've looked at it, if there's any, any questions or comments. Um. And then accessory apartments, other than it's just gonna continue to kind of float there, um. We'll come back around if, if anyone's had a chance to look at some of the information that's shared, we can certainly chat about it or. Uh, if there's thoughts and want to share them with me offline. Um. Then we can, can do that in preparation for an upcoming meeting. I'm happy to chat with anyone offline about that as well.
Thank you. And we have three meetings left right this year.
Correct. So we've got the October twenty-fourth meeting, and then there's just one meeting in November and one in December.
Okay.
Correct. So we're putting, getting down to it for twenty twenty-two.
We are, we are. Shannon, um, bridge and union though? Like, it seems like all the work has stopped.
Uh, correct, because, uh, what I have been told. This is the, this is what, i- i- I'm hoping it's not one of those old wives' tales things, but what I've been told is. Because of. Material shortages and paint, uh, particular, obviously, there's latex and most of the paint that we're using. Um. There's a shortage in paint, and so I don't, not sure if it's the pigment or the latex or what, what, whatever. Nonetheless, there's a shortage of paint, and so we are only, or DOT is only able to procure. Fifty gallons a month. For the paint. So until they, they did pull everyone off, because until they have procured enough paint to finish the job. It doesn't make sense to continue to do this at fifty gallons at a time.
So twenty twenty-three completion date?
So, um.
I like the covered bridge.
So I'm not really sure where we are in our paint procurement process. I'm not really sure how much is left. I haven't had to. Do the math to figure out on the I-beam. What's needed to actually appropriately cover the bridge. So I'm not sure the volume that's needed, um, but that's the reason. And my understanding of where the current status is, and then, of course, now it's getting cold. So, and, uh. So it may be twenty twenty-three, I don't know.
I, that's, Patrick, are you seeing that in your industry?
It, it sounds all too, too familiar, yeah. And the worst part is, is it's not predictable, you know? It's like you're good on one thing and all of a sudden you call your vendor and it's, you know, they're, they tell you, oh, man, that is, you know, that's a month out. You know, one, one item is, uh. I, we, so we're doing a water job and they don't have a hydrant. And they don't know when they're gonna get one, and it could be sometime in two thousand twenty-three. I mean, it's crazy, you know? I used to, we just call it in and two weeks later it was on your property, but no, sounds very familiar.
Oh, my, okay. So I guess it's, but it's safety wise, I mean, it's, there's no, it is what it is, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine from a safety, I mean, the bridge is safe, it's fine. Um, some of the jurors, just like they did last winter, if they need to adjust some of the jersey barriers. They will.
Yeah.
Um, as we get into winter for snow falling and whatnot, but.
Okay.
Uh. Yeah, I'm assuming some of the tart, like that tarp that will have to come off. If they can't finish it, then I'm assuming. The tarp will come off again, a- all because of winter and snow and all that, all, everything that goes with that, but. Um, but I.
It, once that little park is open, it would be nice to have a. Bridge, just the backdrop, but maybe we'll face a different way.
The bridge, there, there way, and there's gonna be a bridge on the top on a kiosk. It's all gonna, it's gonna be beautiful.
All right. Any questions for Shannon?
Uh, I just have two quickies.
Sure.
So Malibu, Malibu's out of business? Did I miss that? I, I go there once a year for the five K on Thanksgiving Day. But, so Malibu's out of business?
So they're currently operating, but there's a purchase and sale and great agreement in place, and I believe what they made reference to. And when Ena's asked if they owned it, is technically they don't own it. One of the. Agreements, uh, conditions of the purchase and sale was to get their land use approval, so. Tonight's approval then starts to clear the way for the purchase and sale to go through and then. Then whatever timing and agreement, right, that becomes part of the business deal as to how that all gets executed.
Okay, okay, so it's still open, it's still.
To the best of my knowledge, as of today, tomorrow, yes, whether that's. I, I don't know what that means for the future and the timing.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, and then the other question is, and this might, it might be a better place for this, but, um. Is. Does, if someone needs to get approval to put in a new driveway with a new curb cut? Does that, no, because I noticed in my neighborhood, someone has put in a new driveway. Does that, because I noticed in my neighborhood, someone has put in a new driveway on Main Street and added a new curb cut and I didn't know if that was, if they can, I know it's, if it's their land, they can do it, but I wasn't sure about the whole curb cut.
So there is some work going on on Main Street that we're aware of and to our knowledge, it's associated with the installation of electrical lines uh that are being brought in for a couple of properties. We have been made aware that somebody is interested in making a new curb cut on Main Street. Um, Main Street, as you know, is Route ten, so that is governed by the DOT with respect to um need for an encroachment permit and DOT approval in order to actually create an additional curb cut out onto Route ten.
Because because there's a new one right next to twenty-seven. There's a new driveway next to twenty-seven Main Street closer to Route four. I don't remember it being there. So just a little FYI, I was just kind of kind of surprised.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take a look and uh we can follow up with DOT, but DOT has the approving authority regarding the 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 driveways and curb cuts out onto Roots on onto any state road.
I I thought so, but okay, thanks.
Thanks, Liz. It was great. Just kidding. Shannon will be driving home that way. And you, anyone else?
Shannon, micro voice, just a quick question. Um, what was the uh result of the A D R C meeting for the Charles House property?
Uh, yes, so for Charles House, so uh and I'm happy, uh, you know, and I can just distribute the meeting minutes to all of you. So the A D R C had a number of comments regarding the facade treatment um more so for the new building than for the renovation of power, the powerhouse building that's there. So it was the two, it was the condo that's right up um that parallels Perry Street and then the the renovation of Powerhouse were the two buildings that were discussed with A D R C. Um, and they want to use a uh basically, it's a faux brick material that they want to use on the new building and the A D R C is quite apprehensive about that. I I guess um similar conversation took place when the stop and shop was coming in and they actually did a field trip to a location where it's a different type of faux brick that had been um uh considered for stop and shop and they it it absolutely killed it and they went within a thin brick for the stop and shop, uh thin brick veneer. So this uh it's the same type. There's definitely some apprehension regarding the uh the facade treatment for that building. There's other things, um, you know, certain window uh things and various treatments, but they the main facade treatment and the the faux brick that they're looking to use on that building um caused quite a bit of discussion. Uh, and fair, unfortunately, it seems like it's a new system, so part of it is trying to get a sample for them to see here, but they'd actually like to see something that's already been built and do a field trip to go see it. Um, hopefully within Connecticut, but they're willing to go further than that if that's needs to be done.
Okay.
They've they felt that strongly about it.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
Certainly.
Are we all set? Good. Okay, so the last thing, thank you, Shannon, for the updates. Amazing. Uh, updates. Uh, the last thing is uh for us to approve the minutes. The last meeting, we need a motion and a second, please.
Oh, yeah, Patrick here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the September twelfth two thousand twenty-two Town Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting.
Second. Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're good. All right, nine fourteen. Meeting adjourned. Thank you again.